All right, good evening. We'll call the meeting to order, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Role call, Mr. Lombard?
All right.
Yes.
Modi, Saxor, Scott, Bell.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve the agendas presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure or waiver requests this evening. Community input? I'm looking, and I'm not seeing any. Takes us to general business. Item number one, administration reports, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of items for the board here this evening as I'll be presenting the state of the schools here later, so don't want to take the floor for too awful long. Brandon Valley School District Strategic Plan Review Evaluation and Revision Process. Look to bring that here at an upcoming meeting that aligns us with our strategic plan with BV Vision 2040, our long-range facility plan, as we continue to work through those respective processes. Berkman Valley Elementary School, that award has, or that bid has been awarded to Pesca Construction. Site utility and foundation work is currently in progress. Expected completion in June of 2026, open for the 26, 27 school year. Happy to say that that is progressing well, and at this point in time, in terms of schedule, we are happy with the progress that we're seeing in terms of timeliness for those initial items. Retired BV staff holiday luncheon. Would just note that is Thursday, December 5th there at Brandon Lutheran Church. Would ask if we could have board member attendees. Would ask that we have a limit of two so that we don't constitute a quorum, but if we can, we can have up to two individuals attend. So if you're able to attend, let me know, and then I can assure that we stick to two. Brandon Valley Legislative Breakfast, please mark your calendar, Thursday, December 12th at 7:00 a.m. We will be meeting with our district legislators here at the Brandon Valley High School Community Room. Next year's academic school year calendar is currently being developed. I did happen to provide a board, a copy of the draft calendar to the board. That's the draft that the Administrative Council, Teacher Liaison Council, and Classified Council are all respectively working off of. Would note that it is consistent in corresponding to past academic calendars. Tentative adoption timeline, initial presentation in our first meeting in January with an adoption at the section, second meeting. A couple academic calendar items to note. It is Thanksgiving week. We do not have school this Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday for Thanksgiving. December 20th is a two-hour early dismissal. Winter break runs through January 1st. We return on January 2nd, 2025. And there's no school on January 13, 2025, or the 20th for Martin Luther King Junior Day. With that, would certainly entertain any questions that you have. I also wanted to note that the good news reports will resume at the second meeting of the month in January, and then as long as I'm spilling a little bit of information about good news, I do want to celebrate a couple of our administrators. First and foremost, I wanted to celebrate Mr. Skibsted. He was honored by the South Dakota Music Educators Association for outstanding, for outstanding support of the arts. So hats off to Mr. Skibsted and all his work and efforts in the support of the arts. And then also just a quick shout out to Sheri Nelson, not directly tied to the Brandon Valley School District, but certainly an accomplishment to celebrate amongst our administrative team. And that is she will be launching her book here tomorrow. So if you're interested, I believe you can get out and take a look at that. Think it might be free for a few days, so feel free to take a look at that. And certainly I want to extend her a congratulatory remark on that incredible professional accomplishment. So with that, that is all I have. Would certainly entertain any questions you have.
All right, hearing none. Board policy, we do not have any tonight. That takes us to general business. 2024-2025 State of the Schools Address.
Thank you, Madam Chair. High-level overview of the district and where we're at. Just want to, just want to first note regarding the school academic accountability process. Our ultimate goal when we start to talk about data and we start to talk about student achievement and performance is ultimately student learning and improved academic performance. We have outlined for, for your respective review kind of the, the general process that I would say we continually undergo every single year when we, when we work through these respective, when we work through these respective processes. And in the end, it's ultimately about student learning and improved academic performance. I will tell you that in our review of data, things are incredibly positive. Our staff is working incredibly hard and promoting student learning and improved outcomes. And the, the general speech would be, be proud, not satisfied. And I think that that's, that's a message that we continually, we continually speak to whenever we take a look at our respective school performance. So when we look at the school performance index in the state of South Dakota, at the high school level, you're looking at student achievement, high school completion, college and career readiness, and then ELL progress. At the elementary, intermediate, and middle level, you're looking at student achievement, academic growth, attendance, and ELL progress. Now, there's a couple of nuances I would note within the state's SPI that we're working through. For example, they transitioned from two years of academic growth to three years of academic growth. So that had an impact on how some scores looked, et cetera. Would note that Inspiration Elementary, I don't even believe they had three years of data to be included in that. So there, there's a nuance there. And then lastly, I would tell you that the state of South Dakota is now in a situation where they're kind of evaluating the SPI and exactly what that makeup will look like moving forward with some potential changes that they are also taking a look at. But want to dig right into our performance at the district level. So elementary ELA, when I say elementary ELA, I'm talking about third and fourth graders across the district in the Brandon Valley School District. Seventy-four percent of our third and fourth graders were proficient or advanced in the state of South Dakota. The other gra, or the other bar, bar line there is the state of South Dakota, and that represents the elementary proficiency percentage in the state of South Dakota, which is 46. In the area of mathematics at the elementary level, the Brandon Valley School District is at 76%. The state of South Dakota is at 50. So fifth and sixth grade ELA performance would note that the Brandon Valley School District is at 74%. You can see the state's respective proficiency percentage to the right. In the area of math, we were 67% proficient or advanced in comparison to the state at 41. At the seventh and eighth grade ELA level, 69% of Brandon Valley School District students were proficient or advanced, 20 points higher than the state average of 49%. In the area of mathematics, Brandon Valley School District's seventh and eighth graders performed 59%, were proficient or advanced in comparison to 41% at the state level. When we take a look at science performance, it's important to note that our science, our state's science assessment occurs in fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade. And at the fifth grade level, 67% of Brandon Valley School District students were proficient or advanced in science, 57% were proficient or advanced in eighth grade science, and 65% were proficient or advanced in 11th grade science. You can again see this respective state average there. High school ELA and math, I want to, want to take a look at this. In the area of English Language Arts, our 11th graders were 81% proficient or advanced in comparison to the state at 63. And then in the area of mathematics, 62% were proficient or advanced in comparison to 37. English Language Learner Progress, and this is the percent on track to exit ELL programming. And that is ultimately determined by a special assessment that our ELL students take. In the Brandon Valley School District, 43% of our ELL kiddos were on track to exit in comparison to the state of South Dakota where 34% were on track to exit. Graduation rates and completion rates, so what we have here is ultimately the four-year cohort, or that would be on-time graduation in terms of graduating with the respective class that you entered high school in. We're running at 95% in comparison to the state at 84%. And then high school completion, so this would be those kiddos that maybe didn't have all their credits taken care of, had to come back for credit recovery in the month of June, et cetera. The Brandon Valley School District is at 98% completion rate for our respective kiddos in comparison to 91 at the state level. In terms of academic performance, I think that it's, you know, it's critically important to recognize and identify that we prepare for the future together, and it's our families being actively engaged and involved and supportive in addition to the great work that our building-level administrators are doing. And then naturally, our classroom teachers, that's the number-one factor in student achievement that we can control, so they play a critical role in that. And then lastly, I would just most certainly say the students and their respective efforts and attitude towards, towards, towards performance and academic achievement. If it matters, it gets measured, and if it's measured, it matters. And I think that our respective administration, staff, students, and families really gravitate to that, and they take pride in the, the results that they produce and the performance that they, and the performance that they have on those respective tasks. So a special thank you to not only our kiddos and our staff and our, and our families, but also the community for the high expectations they hold for the district because that all plays a critical part in what we do. Taking a look at facilities, I just wanted to give you a high-level overview. These are based on our fall enrollment, doesn't include out-of-district kiddos, but I just wanted to, wanted you to see this. And as we look at this, the, the item that I want to note is, while you're driving around the district and you're seeing the growth and the infrastructure and the things that are occurring, I think it's critically important to take a look at our current facility usage and then also what we have planned on the books for what I would call the short-term, intermediate, and long-term future. And quite frankly, the plan is shaping up very, very well. When we, when we take a look at this, I would first point to, when you look at Fred Assam in Inspiration Elementary, there's some space there specifically at Inspiration Elementary. The boundary on the western side of our school district captures most of the new growth that will occur on the west side. That will flow to Inspiration Elementary, right where you have space. And then naturally, we can see Robert Bennetts is starting to fill up or getting full, so is Fred. But we'll have the ability to utilize Inspiration to its full capacity and then pull that, pull that capacity out of Robert Bennetts Elementary. And the development on the west side of, of the river here, just south of Holly Boulevard, the Van Busker Development that is going to be a very large development, that will all flow to Robert Bennetts Elementary eventually. And then when you think about like the Aspen Ridge Development, that would naturally flow to the Robert, Robert Bennetts Elementary. However, with the new Berkman Valley Elementary School going in, that will pick up those kiddos in addition to obviously the Chestnut Ridge Development, et cetera. So that is, that is incredibly important. The other thing that I want to draw your attention to is the intermediate school. And as you can see here, capacity of 875, you're growing, you're approaching that. We have a bond issue that will come off the tax rolls in 2027. So naturally, as we had previously, we've really tried to leverage ourselves to be in a position where one bond issue can come off, and then we can run a bond so that the tax rate does not change. And the, the same general concept exists here. As the intermediate school fills up, reaches capacity, and we need that second intermediate school, bond comes off, no increase to the tax rate, have the ability to build Brandon Valley Intermediate School south, just south of Inspiration Elementary. We own 60 acres of land down there. So you can see how that naturally fits. And then I would just note that when that gets built, Fred Assam, Inspiration Elementary, and then what would be the future west side will service as the boundary for Beavis South. And then RBE, Brandon Elementary, and the east Berkman Valley Elementary would service Brandon Valley Intermediate School North. So you have two real nice, natural boundary lines created for both Beavis South and Beavis North. The middle school is also listed there, and as we have our larger classes grow up in and push that, push on that capacity number, I would note that the middle school addition that we are currently in the process of planning takes that capacity number out to about 1,200. So that creates space there for long-range growth into the future. And then naturally, you can see the high school and what that looks like in comparison to its current capacity with our recent high school addition. Takes our capacity here at the high school out over 2,000. So I think what I'm, what I would ask you to do is as you, as you drive around for various things within the school district, take notice to the respective growth and then just give him some consideration and thought to the plan that we have put in place and how it appears to be coming together quite nicely. So over the course of the next two, three, five, 10 years, I do believe you're going to see BV Vision 2040 just come to life and the items get checked off as we go, which shouldn't be a surprise because over the course of the last five years or so, we've seen those things come about as well. Brandon Valley Strategic Plan Review, just wanted to bring this back top of mind. In the area of student achievement, we had previously done survey research and taken comments and feedback from all of our respective stakeholders. And we did ask them to rank us on a scale of one to four, and I did include that here. But I want to just highlight a couple of things from each respective area that really kind of resonated towards the top. In terms of student achievement, one area that, that I would say came in loud and clear was maintain a focus on the core, specifically reading, writing, arithmetic. That, that was a, that was a focus and an emphasis. But in addition to that, there was, I would say, a trend associated with the importance of maintaining a learning environment that results in success and minimizing distractions, disruptive behaviors, and things that negatively impact classroom instructions. So those are, those are strategies that we need to think about as we continue to move forward and try to create learning environments that result in success. In terms of staff development, we want to support highly effective teachers, leaders, and staff. And I would tell you that we've utilized our CLC process for the last three years. Overall, the feedback regarding CLCs has been positive. It's an approach to building collective teacher efficacy, which is ultimately what we're looking for when we want our whole staff to try and drive forward that student, student achievement. And I anticipate that we will continue on with the CLC model as we work to support those highly effective teachers, leaders, and staff. Facilities and operations, create safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments. One item I would, one item I would note is that as you grow, operationally, things become more challenging because capacity gets what appears to be less and things get stretched. So that is one item that, one item and one challenge that we have to work through. How do you maintain that high level of service while operationally it gets harder just simply based on numbers, available resources, and those things? Fiscal responsibility, I guess I would just note that we most certainly practice effective, efficient, and sustainable business practices. And when we've, are confronted with a situation that, for lack of a better phrase, isn't sustainable, we attack it head-on. I would point to our enrollment shortfall last year as well as our sped fund challenge that we're currently working through and trying to improve. And then lastly, the parent and community relations component. I think the, the resonating message in this, in this realm really surrounds growing and continuing to emphasize the, the partnerships we have within the respective school district for all things, whether it be internships, whether it be work-based learning, whether it be mentorship, all of those respective partnerships just continuing to expand on those respective relations in terms of engagement. I think that it's also really important to note that family engagement within our schools is probably one of the, the best attributes that we have, and we need to continue to reinforce that. At times, it may feel like that fades, but I do believe that we are very, very fortunate to have the supportive families that we do, but that is something that we need to continue to press on and lean on. There will certainly be more to come on the 25 to 30 Strategic Plan. A little look ahead in terms of budget and staffing. You guys are all aware, our current enrollment or our fall enrollment came in above our, our respective projection. That is obviously very beneficial in terms of us not being in a situation where we were scraping around trying to figure out how to, how to make it work. But that puts us in a good situation moving forward. And then I would also just note that we have special education fund challenges. Those are, those are some really dynamic, complex issues that we are currently working through and working to find efficiencies where practical and feasible. But they are, they are most certainly presenting a challenge. And there's some other nuances associated that with being a year behind in terms of funding and December 1 counts, and there's a number of things associated with it. But we are working through some challenges with that, and that will most certainly play into the 25, 26 budget and staffing situation, something to be cognizant of. I believe that if I was to specify a like mentality for you as we approach the, as we approach the upcoming school year, as we're planning for that, I believe we will be able to staff necessary priorities. Now, I think whenever we start having that conversation, necessary priorities range greatly from all levels of the business. It could be, you know, parental priorities, it could be building priorities, it could be staff priorities, it could be administrative priorities, it could be superintendent priorities. So we work through our respective planning process. We ask our building-level administration to submit five-year plans outlining their staffing needs. And then ultimately, the central office is tasked with vetting those respective needs, prioritizing what's in the best interest of the district, and bringing forward the recommendation to you guys. So I do believe we will be able to staff our necessary priorities. However, I do not necessarily believe it will be very fluffy. In addition to that, it's important to note that the statute that was passed last legislative session dictates the amount of money that has to go to certified teaching staff. So there is a little bit of that nuance that we are going to be coming familiar with, is what I would say, as we, as we continue to move through the, as we continue to move through the respective process. So apologize, maybe I spoke too quickly, but want to, want to be cognizant of time. Would certainly, would certainly field any questions you have at this respective time?
More of a comment than a question. Obviously, this is a topic of conversation at the state level, too. And they spend time looking at the districts that make considerable movement from where they were. But it always comes up towards the end of the conversation. How is it that Brandon Valley continues to stay on top and continue to produce results year after year after year? Because that could be arguably harder. Sometimes when you're at the top, it's harder to maintain that spot. My answer to them, and I just want to say it here as well, is Brandon Valley truly believes that we have to invest the majority of our funds as possible into our staff. You get the best staff, they support our student learning. And that has been thanks to Paul and Dr. Larson for continuing to support that. But that is no secret, and not every district does that. As much as we do appreciate our community and how they surround us, the one comment I do want to also make is that as much as I thank every single person involved in the school for what they do for the students in our school district, it's also not lost at what each of you do for an impact on our community. Brandon Valley is sought after for people to move to, to stay at because of the proficient and beyond proficient education that their children get. So you don't just have an impact inside these walls, it's all the way out to the community, and I don't know that everyone has grasped that. And that's from being in the classroom to creating a wonderful learning environment, making sure the kids are fed well and also bussed here. So just thank you so very much for every single thing you do for the school, but also for the community of Brandon.
I do have a question about the, the test results, whether it's the elementary, the fifth and sixth grade, our intermediate. Is that, you know, our elementary is K through four. So is that on the state? I mean, some of the elementary schools are K through sixth or seventh, you know, as long as they're broke down into those categories as well, correct?
Yes. So for the purpose of elementary ELA and math performance, district versus state, I take our third and fourth graders and the state's third and fourth graders. So that is specific to them. In terms of fifth and sixth grade, and you are absolutely correct, our intermediate school is considered an elementary school for the purpose of definition. In terms of this, I poll our fifth and sixth graders and the state's fifth and sixth graders. Where you'll see a little bit of wonkiness, I would say, is when you start comparing like the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade middle school over here to Brandon Valley Middle School that only has seventh and eighth graders. So that's why I've elected in my, my State of the, State of the Schools Address to try and group them in accordance to Brandon Valley grade level. So this is, when you're looking at fifth and sixth grade ELA math, that is district and state, and I poll the state's fifth and sixth grade number, put them together, divide by two.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Superintendent Larson tonight? All right. Thank you very much, Superintendent Larson, for your presentation. I would entertain a motion to approve items two and three under consent, please.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel, I would entertain a motion to approve items one through 10. So moved. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Items 11 through 13 are for information only. That takes us to board reports. Does anyone have a formal board report they would like to share this evening?
Real quick, so we did have the ASBSD Directors Conference last week, followed by the delegate, which I think member Scott for attending. There are, I wouldn't say any real concerns. We had a pretty, I guess, what we thought would happen in the election. So what we do believe that we may have to have a pretty good stance against is any deferring of funds to schools outside of public. So whether, they're going to get real creative with what those bills sound like. It won't just sound like vouchers, it's going to be very creative. So we just need to make sure that we keep our eyes on that, and I'll keep you aware. Other than that, the biggest thing is we took a lot of our standing positions and soaked in some of our resolutions because they have and soaked in some of our resolutions because they haven't changed, and also so that Heath Larson doesn't split his focus. When he talks to legislators, it's really all about as much funding as possible for public education with local control, so that we can spend it where we need it. There will be talk around continued CTE, which that's fantastic, as well as special education, which we noted is necessary. So that's kind of what's on the outlook right now, but nothing that I would say that we know of immediately that's going to be anything more. But we do have quite a few legislators that are pro not-private school. So we just need to keep our eyes on it.
Obviously, second that. It's very nice to hear Ellie verbally again. Her voice was shot, and so there was a lot of concern out there to pass on, get healthy Ellie. So they will be happy to know that you're better. The, the biggest thing that I think was mentioned out there was a lot of deletion and getting rid of a lot of verbiage and the nonsense and moving it to a standing, standing, you know, resolution. And so my question was, why are we getting rid of some of these like really important things? And they said, because we're moving them to the standing, which means we're always going to be concerned about these issues. So it's not a, it's not deleting them necessary, but yeah, combining them and being more standing on them and saying this, these are things that we're not going to move from. The, there was thirteen of the standing positions that we solidified, and then there was thirty of the resolutions that we cleaned up. And so there was a lot of verbiage. Let's just say that. It, it did go very smoothly. I think there was a hundred and eighteen, a hundred and twenty voters out there. So it was a good turnout, beautiful weather. So thank you.
Are you finding the executive director to be really difficult to work with? That's been my experience.
You know, aft, afterwards, he did come up to me, and he just applauded the Brandon Valley School Board for putting up with the other Dr. Larson. So yes, he's doing very well.
And to that, I did get a nice bouquet of flowers with a note saying this is bigger than what Dr. Larson would send you, so.
Yes. I second that.
All right. Any other formal board reports tonight? I guess I'll put a little plug in for Teach Well. It's going very well. We're very busy. And sometimes it's just, it's just hard to find staff that are, that, the caliber that we need because of, you know, it's, we deal with a lot of difficult, very difficult behaviors down there. So anyway.
Sorry, real quick. Following the heels of football, we also had the fall play go on, which I think was fantastic, as well as the middle school had their production. And they had a hundred and thirty, I think a hundred and twenty-seven was the real number of students involved in that. And to see that stage filled with that many kiddos was incredible. And just to me, I don't know how you corral them all. But it was coordinated and choreographed beautifully. So just great job to our staged performances at both the middle school and the high school level.
Second that. Congratulations, football team and volleyball. I'm sure there's many of other things that we need to keep recognizing for outstanding performances. So thank you.
Anyone else? All right. There's a travel report there for your review. Otherwise, that takes us to the end of our meeting. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Second. There's been a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. And if you're traveling, please be safe. We need you.